Welcome, everybody. Tonight's Vicksburg Planning Commission meeting, regular session, 7:00 PM, Monday, December 11th, 2023. Called this meeting to order. Let's go ahead and get attendance.
Mr. Cox is excused tonight, not here. I'll go ahead. Mr. Wirtella.
Present.
Mr. DeBalt.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Ms. Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Ryashi.
Here.
And both Chair Schenkel and Member Cox are excused. Could not make it tonight.
Thanks, Jim. Let's see, can I get agenda in front of us? Christian making sure everybody's awake. Everybody's got the agenda in front of them. Get approval for the agenda.
We do have one addition, if I can.
Thank you.
On 13B, I believe it is. After the Village Manager's report will be citizen comments for non-agenda items. It's a little unique tonight in that after the approval of minutes, we have citizen comments on agenda items. Three action items are on the agenda. One of those will have a public hearing in which citizen comments specific to that hearing are taken at that time as well. But if comments for non-agenda items will be placed after the Village Manager's report.
We have approval of minutes of the last session, November 13th, 2023.
We gotta go back.
I'm sorry.
And I confused you by interrupting on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. This is Member Wirtella, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, we can move on to the minutes, November 13th, 2023.
This is Member Bishop, make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November 13th, 2023.
Got a motion, got support?
Support.
Meeting minutes are approved. Citizen comments time on agenda items only.
You have to vote on the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We had the motion, we had the second, I believe. We just now have the vote, and I.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, on to citizen comments.
For citizen comments, we ask that you, per Village Council rules, state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to speak, and our Director of Finance, Michelle Morgans, will be right across from you when she raises your hand, when she raises her hand. That'll be at the two and a half minute mark. This is for citizen comments. It's not a question and answer, period. So if you wish to make comments on an agenda item tonight, we'd encourage you to come to the microphone. We'll hit the button to turn it on. And again, say your name, your address, and your comments to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
I see you over there. Good evening. My name is Chris Newman. I live at 1149 Meadow Suite Lane in the Village of Vicksburg. I, and as an agenda item, I wanted to just make a quick comment on the approval for the site plan for the Big B Coffee. I understand that this has been a contentious issue for many people, and I do understand that, you know, while that property is zone commercial, and that is a commercial enterprise, it's my feeling that the land use for that particular parcel has been ignored so far in this process. The land use for that particular parcel is downtown core, which relates to walkability and keeping in design character with the remaining buildings downtown, most of which tend to be two-story, fronted against the sidewalk. From everything that I have seen regarding this new, and heard regarding this new development, it will be neither. We've taken great pains to make the downtown more walkable and encourage people to get out and visit the shops on foot. I don't see how putting a business that you can only access by vehicle is supporting that idea in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Rebecca Walters, 420 South Kalamazoo Ave., Vicksburg. On the Big B subject, have we looked at influx of traffic in that area? If it's conducive to school hours, most of you guys leave for morning, want coffee, so are the buses, so are the kids, the new drivers trying to get to school. That corner is hellacious to drive in the morning and when everyone is getting out of work, especially when there are semis going through. We, I do not feel that that is a great place to be having vehicles trying to get their morning coffee circulating all around that. Also, in regards to the Centennial, I really, I saw a couple of you guys at the master plan meetings exactly a year ago. I went to two of them where all of your constituents and residents voted on the style of houses. Are we going to be ignoring that going forward with Centennial and making sure that it is not a dense, we're not making it more dense than it's supposed to be? And I think that's what I've got. Thank you.
I'm Jo Ramsdale. I live at 1126 Meadow Suite Lane, and I had a couple of thoughts on the subdivision, Centennial. We living where we are, drainage is a real issue, and if you're only five feet from the property line, 10 feet from the property line would be much better to drain and to shape things so that the water drains off. The properties across the street from us that, between Meadow Suite and, thank you, Winter Cherry, tends to fill up with water when it rains heavy because there's not good drainage back there. And so if they're going to be doing more subdivisions, you might consider having some kind of a drainage system between backyards to get to the sewer so it's not flooding and whatnot. But that was just some thoughts.
Anyone else like to speak during public comments?
We will move on to the summary presentation on Homestead at Centennial. Mr. Mallory.
Mr. Bailey, and thank you, Planning Commission, and thank you, all the citizens that have come tonight. This is nice to see the interaction in government. Tonight, we are presenting the Homestead at Centennial, and as the Planning Commission is aware, this conversation with the developer has gone on, multiple meetings over multiple weeks and probably multiple months as of now. And it's been refreshing conversations with the management group of the developer, who actively listened to us bringing forward what we felt was in the best interest of Vicksburg, that how the master plan of 2015 currently reads, and as well as the input we've received to this point from citizens, Planning Commission members, council members as it relates to housing, future growth of the village. I think key points need to be known, and I'll turn over some of the conversations to some subject matter experts that I certainly rely on. I have 100% confidence and full faith. First, our Village Attorney, Catherine Kaufman. Thank you publicly, Catherine, for all of your patience with my questions and advice, as well as the entire team at McKenna, but specifically Kyle Mucha, who will be to speak to the Planning Commission as well. From our perspective, they'll talk a little bit on the piecing this together, and we will then ask the Planning Commission to go into the public hearing, take additional comments, come out of the public hearing, and then I'll go ahead and present staff's recommendation. So the conclusion and recommendation will come after the public hearing. But I think key points to recognize is, this is a PRD. We have explained that process. Part of a PRD could allow for a reduction in size of lot sizes. That is not the case, as the developer in every single lot has committed to meeting our three zoning minimums for this development, which we're very happy and pleased to report to the Planning Commission and, again, part of those positive conversations with the developer. I think also, the not reducing, but yet offering public space in this area will be a benefit to the majority of units, for sure, if not all. And my concluding remarks until presenting the staff recommendation is it's part of a process. So this is a sketch approval as well as a special land use, and I'll make sure that staff presents the special land use and the requirements of that, as well as the PRD. But we, if this moves forward after tonight, there'll be a detailed site plan review that'll come back, and those will have a lot of the details that we know this developer will come forward with. So I look forward to it. I'm going to introduce Kyle Mucha to talk about McKenna. This has been reviewed extensively. McKenna is a company, and Kyle can explain it, specific to planning and zoning numerous municipalities. I think it's in the Midwest. He can get into those details. But our subject matter experts in this area and representing Vicksburg, our engineering firm, Pryne Newhoff, has been involved, as well as Catherine Kaufman and her staff looking at it from a legal standpoint. So as staff, we certainly rely on their advice, and they participated pretty much in every one of these meetings. So Kyle, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. To the Planning Commission's benefit, if we could first start on the site plan or conceptual plan review within your packet, and then we will move on to the special land use afterwards. So as Mr. Mallory has indicated to the Planning Commission, the developer, Green Development Ventures LLC is seeking to construct an approximate 118 units or lots within the 35-acre parcel that's off of 22nd Street, just immediately south of the Centennial neighborhood and north of the Trillium neighborhood. As Mr. Mallory indicated, the R3 district is a single-family and two-family home. The applicant under, working with them, has pursued the planned residential development qualifications within the Village of Vicksburg zoning ordinance. They had multiple options moving forward with this. One was to plat, or another was to seek a planned residential development option, which, as Mr. Mallory indicated, does permit some flexibility within their design concepts. We would again like to highlight that the developer is committed, talking with staff, to keeping the lots at the 7,200 square feet, which is the minimum required in the R3 district, even though the PRD, planned residential development, does permit a reduction in lot. However, again, they are committed to the 7,200 square feet as the minimum in the R3 district. Further on in this, there are provisions within the Village of Vicksburg zoning ordinance that talks about requirements for planned resident developments. Minimum area shall be met. They meet that, exceed the minimum area at 35 acres. Ownership, that is taken care of as well. It's under a single tract of ownership. It's not multiple parcels. It's a single parcel. We look at location. They're proposing their PRD in the R3 district, which is permitted. Utilities, public water, sanitary sewer, and storm drainage will be provided. Approval comes through the Planning Commission under the sketch plan, special land use, and then a site plan afterwards. The difference between your sketch plan and site plan, sketch plan talks about the conceptual design, so there could be some ultimate changes with potential layout, depending on utilities, within the sketch plan, and then it will come back to the Planning Commission for site plan approval. And that is indicative of engineering drawings, further analysis on that, which you do not have here, again, it's a conceptual, so high-level picture on this. And then during the site plan review that you'll see coming up, working with the applicant, that's when we get into the engineer drawings, where the storm locations are going to be, how the roads will be laid out further. So that's not the topic tonight. Under this, the permitted uses, under Section 475-103, does permit within a PRD, single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, apartment, townhouses, and condominiums. The applicant is proposing single-family dwellings within this development. There are design requirements within the PRD district, which has a number of dwelling units per lot, lot area requirements, which we've already highlighted on. And then from there as well, we also look at setback in yard requirements. These provisions have been met under our sketch plan review. We also look at minimum lot frontage. There's approximately 115 of the 118 that they're proposing meet the minimum frontage. The applicant has been made aware with staff on how to correct that, and so during the site plan review, they will meet full compliance with the lot requirements. There are screening provisions we also look at, and the amount of open space. These provisions have been met in terms of the sketch plan. Arrangement of open space as well has been reviewed consistently with the applicant, and they are committed to providing the maximum amount of open space as the development will permit. Sketch plan shall show the information related to this, such as the principal uses, where utilities will be eventually. So they meet the sketch plan requirements on this. So again, I'd like to just reiterate to the Planning Commission, this is not a site plan review, this is sketch plan. So overall, out of the 118 units they're proposing, they meet the requirements, and I'll defer to Mr. Mallory later on for the staff recommendation. But, so that's for the sketch plan. And then after that, we do have a special land use review, and that's part of the PRD, planned residential development requirements for this. There are two standards that we review through the ordinance that talks about special land uses. Number one, the proposed use does not affect adversely the general plan for physical development of the village, as embodied in this chapter and in any master plan or portion adopted by the village. Our review finds that the applicant is compliant with this provision. The second provision that they shall comply with, the proposed use will not affect adversely the health, safety of residents or workers in the area, and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or the general neighborhood. And the applicant is proposing neighborhood residential units. Neighborhood residential units are surrounding this site. We find that this provision has been satisfied. Mr. Mallory, I'll pause there for any questions or any further comments from you, sir.
Let, Playing Commission members, questions that you'll have for staff, we'll go ahead and take after the public hearing, so we can get the public input. And then any questions you have, you know, go ahead and ask me, and I'll direct them. I'll answer them or direct them to the staff member that's more appropriate, so. With that, we'll introduce our Village Attorney, Catherine Kaufman, and again, thank her for her leadership in this.
I am recently your Village Attorney. I don't know exactly how many months it's been, but by way of introduction, I'm Municipal Attorney and Partner of Baucham, Thaw, Seber Kaufman, and Coaches in Portage. I represent over 35 municipalities as General Counsel. Our firm represents over 100. Most close to you, I'm the City of Portage Attorney. I'm also an AICP, which is a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I was a planner before I went to law school, so a lot of my practice focuses on land use and zoning. I've been involved in these discussions with the village, with Kyle, Luca. I've been involved in these discussions with the village, with Kyle, Luca, and then with the applicant as we work through this process. As many of you may know, this is supposed to be a site condominium, and the way that those have been processed previously through the village is a PRD, Planned Residential Development. So that's where we are. The applicant could have gone through a subdivision plat. They decided they didn't want to. They're going through the PRD, and under the zoning ordinance, that is under the purview of the Planning Commission. So you will tonight, either after tonight or at some meeting in the near future, make a decision on the PRD application, which is special land use and sketch plans at this point. So if anyone has any questions for me in terms of the legality, as part of the final site plan, I will require a copy of the condo docs, the master deed, and the bylaws and all that, so I can make sure that there isn't anything in there that would not meet the requirements of the village in terms of contraction, expansion, any types of changes, that type of thing. So we will look at the condo docs when we come to the final site plan stage. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, I would recommend moving to 6C if the board feels motion support and roll call vote enter into the public hearing for the special use approval, which was properly, publicly noted.
Do we have a motion to go into public hearing for the special use approval? Need a motion?
Make a motion that we enter into the public hearing for the special use approval.
Member Wortella, I second that motion.
Support and approve, and we will do a roll call.
Roll call vote will be Member Riashy.
Member Riashy, support.
Ms. Plankenhorn?
Support.
Mr. Bishop?
Support.
Mr. Holmes?
Support.
Mr. DeBolt?
Support.
Mr. Wortella?
Support.
Chair Bailey?
Support.
We'll go ahead and move into a public hearing for land, special land use approval. Green Venture Development is requesting special land use to develop a planned residential development, commonly referred to as the homestead at Centennial. Citizen comments specific to this hearing must state their full name and home address per Village Council rules. Time is limited to three minutes. After all citizens in attendance have spoke, I have received one written communication that I will go read on behalf of that citizen. So again, you might have spoke earlier, but if you can again state your name and your address, appreciate it, and limit comments to three minutes, please.
Rebecca Walters, 420 South Kalamazoo at Vicksburg, Michigan. I did go to the master plan meeting over at Centennial, even though I am downtown, and I put my input in the Centennial, and I was there and saw quite a few other residents put their opinion in, and it stated they all agreed they did not want Edwin Allen, and they didn't want the closeness that they have now. And I believe I saw a couple of months ago that you guys had two different ideas, either around 86, 87, around 80 houses versus 118. That is excessive. I remember there was a couple of years ago, we had a crazy storm, and every storm that is over by Centennial is listed as a catastrophic event, where they have to fly in appraisers and assessors to help with the, any hail damage, wind damage, any of that stuff, to help because of how close the buildings are. It is ridiculous. We need to really consider how dense you guys are trying to make these areas when it comes to fires, natural disasters, things along that, and what your residents in that area are actually saying. We scrolled past it pretty fast, but it was mentioned of Edwin Allen. They are not built very well to last, and your residents are aware of this and spoke up about it at the master plan meeting. It was mentioned at every single location where we had the three meetings, no more Edwin Allen, and not as dense. And you guys are going exactly against that in this plan. Thank you.
Chris Newman, 1149 Meadows Suite Lane. I wanted to speak to this. I've known since we moved into this neighborhood about 10 years ago that future development was coming in the field directly to our north. That has been platted, that was planned when Trillium Neighborhood was developed and beginning to develop in 1995. The original development plan for that section of property called for approximately 88 homes with a continuation of Trillium Boulevard, Winter Cherry, and Meadows Suite Lane connecting up to there with three cross streets accessing 22nd Street. I see on the sketch plan that they still have the names of those streets, the three new streets, that were going to be there, that were on the original development plan for that parcel, and I'm curious as to how they sourced those, as we don't seem to be able to find any of the documentation from the Trillium neighborhood. I also have a question as to why, if the developer is planning on meeting the lot minimum for an R3 development of 7,200 square feet and not deviating from that, why the request for a special land use? And my only assumption is that once this is planned and approved, they will be coming back to this commission to request setback relief from the front and the sides, because they will not be able to develop, excuse me, structures on those parcels that conform to the 10-foot minimum side yard setback. On that note, there is a piece in there, another piece for site plan approval, that the design has to be harmonious with surrounding area. Lot size in the Trillium neighborhood is approximately .22 acres. A 7,200-square-foot lot is .1 acres. So your lots are half the size of what exists. Now, if this development was attached to Centennial or attached to the meadows across the street, I would say that that development is harmonious. But it is not attached to either of those. It is attached directly to the Trillium neighborhood, and therefore, it's my opinion that that development is not harmonious with what we have here. If you look across the street at Madison Heights, that's a completely different zone. It's not harmonious with that. Depends on how far you want to cast that net as to, is it harmonious? I don't believe that it is with Trillium. I do understand, and I appreciate the fact that they have agreed to maintain the R3 lot minimum. I would like to see more. I would like to see a larger lot, and I definitely would like to know why they didn't pursue the traditional platted neighborhood plan if they're going to maintain the R3 minimum. Thank you.
My name is John Rosla. I'm at 1011 Lotus Lily. So as you guys probably saw, Lotus Lily is right on the southern border of this. So this is literally my backyard. So I do have a couple of concerns. One is I'm worried about traffic on my road. So from what I saw up there, this is the first time I've seen the plan. You can kind of see it right there. Where's all that traffic coming from the village into? Right in front of my house out there. So thank you. So how much more traffic is going to come through there? You know, I know I don't have kids, but I got dogs that can get loose and stuff, and you know, I want to keep the atmosphere of the current plat. I know there are kids on my road here as well, with my neighbors somewhere here tonight. I have concerns for their safety as well, for the increased traffic. So I just didn't know if that's been taken into effect or into account. So on that, I also worry about, you know, again, the lot size. I think it should be harmonious with Trillium plat, if it's going to be attached to Trillium plat. I know there was a plan before Skip and Larry went belly up with that, and that was the plat, what we all assumed when we bought our houses, that was going to go in. So similar style, all that good stuff. So I kind of feel like, you know, it's not kind of what we were told, and I understand you guys can't control that, obviously, but I would like, you know, kind of a reference to that as well, especially with lot size out there. I do feel the Centennial is way too close. I do worry about the safety, and you know, I didn't want to be crammed in when I bought my house. So and lastly, I just wanted to mention, you know, I do kind of worry about our schools as well with how many, with the influx of kids that we have coming in with the new plat. Can our schools take it? I know, again, I don't have kids, but I do have, I'm also the president of the league, so I know a lot of parents out here, and they are concerned about whether our schools can take the influx of kids without expanding schools, which means then higher taxes for all of us as well. So just some things I'd just like to take and consider. So and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Joe Ramsdale, 1126 Meadows Suite Lane. My one concern is if you put up a lot of close homes and they're kind of starter homes, they become people excited to come from apartments, they can get this. But a lot of people will start at one house, and as their life progresses, they want to move on and upgrade. Well, if you don't have houses there that they can upgrade to, they're going to leave and go elsewhere. And so you don't want to push them away by not including housing that they can progress up with, and just as a thought.
Is there anyone else that desires a public comment? Read an email I received at 425 from Mr. John Moody. Just picks it up from here, Christian. Good evening. My name is John Moody, a resident of 1405 Gardner Pond Lane in Vicksburg, or more importantly, the Centennial neighborhood. I'm also the former HOA president of said community. It is with this in mind that I lodge a complaint against the naming of the proposed, in quotes, "the homestead at Centennial," end of quotes. This name is misleading and will cause nothing but confusion to residents that buy into the new neighborhood. As many know, there is already a Centennial North neighborhood that is joined together with Centennial. However, this is where the commonality ends. The Centennial North developers did not amend their paperwork in time, creating Centennial North as a standalone neighborhood with a separate set of governing documents, HOA rules, board members, and dues. This has caused the Board of Centennial, in quotes, "proper," end of quotes, no end of headaches. During my time as president of the HOA, we dealt with continual complaints from residents due to inconsistent HOA rules between neighborhoods. We also field a number of angry Centennial North complaints regarding the usage of the pool and clubhouse. The pool and clubhouse are owned and maintained by the owners of Centennial, in quotes, "proper," end of quotes, and are not a guarantee for North residents. As of this month, the current board has decided to stop allowing any outside residents to buy a, in quotes, "pool pass," end of quotes, in an effort to retain the value of the original neighborhood. By naming the new community, in quotes, "the homestead at Centennial," end of quotes, the developers are doing nothing but causing even more confusion between the neighborhoods and consequently, the three HOAs that will be involved. I request that the developers decide upon something more original, even shorten it to, in quotes, "the homestead," end of quotes, would be enough. But anything involving the word "Centennial" would be misleading and defrauding the potential residents that would buy into the new community. Best regards, John Moody. We receive no other communication. Mr. Chair referenced this, and asking any further public comments? No.
If nobody else, I will, we have a motion to close the open session we have here. Public hearing, thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing for the special use approval.
Member Wortella, I second.
Motion by Holmes, seconded by Wortella. Close the public hearing. Yep, we do need a roll call vote.
Roll call vote will be Member DeBolt.
Yes.
Member Holmes.
Yes.
Member Bishop.
Yes.
Member Wortella.
Yes.
Member Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Member Riashy.
Yes.
Chair Bailey.
Yes.
Appreciate all the comments and communication, reference the development here off of 22nd Street. Would like to start with how I kind of concluded, this is a sketch plan review as well as a special land use. So this is two steps tonight, and ultimately, which will lead to a third step with a detailed site plan review. Prior to that presentation, we will continue to work with this developer as we move forward to ensure that the site plan would meet the expectations of the Planning Commission as we present it. I believe on the special land use, the advice and recommendations from McKennan Associates and our village attorney are what formed the foundation for my recommendation. And speaking of the special land use, first, it is staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission that all the criteria of the special land use has been met, and it is our recommendation that it receives approval from the Planning Commission. The master plan from 2015 documents that contemporary residential areas have the character of more recently developed, single-family neighborhoods encompassing the outlined residential areas in the north and south portions of the village. Lots are larger, feature houses of various styles, many of which are newer construction. Appropriate land uses include detached, single-family units, schools, churches, municipal and civic buildings. Site design, specifically, the document of the master plan reads, "Small lots are encouraged, and setbacks should be consistent." The oversight again, and the recommendation is that the special land use is approved by the Planning Commission. Mr. Chair, if we want to, they will be separate roll call votes. If you want to stick to the subject of the special land use, I'll be happy to answer any questions Planning Commission members might have.
Any questions for Mr. Mallory? Jim, if I could, Kyle mentioned that I believe it's two criteria for, we have to meet, that the developer has to meet with special land uses. Is that correct?
Correct. Both have been met.
Okay. Would you mind just reiterating again what those two are for me, please?
Sure. The first is the proposed use does not affect adversely the general plan for the physical development of the village as embodied in this chapter and in any master plan or portion adopted by the village. The current use of the subject site is agriculture. The applicant proposes to construct an estimated 118 single-family residential dwelling units within this development proposal. The subject site is surrounded to the northeast and south by other single-family residential dwelling developments.
So it sounds like the planned development is consistent with the way the land's been used out in that area, then?
Correct. It was determined that the site design and layout will be further addressed in the site plan review analysis, but the applicant has indicated the lot size will match existing zoning of that district, which is R3. The minimum size of the lots, which supports the statement of the master plan of small lots. Therefore, we find the applicant has met the intent of this provision, and the proposed residential development is consistent with the master plan and surrounding development patterns in the area.
Thank you.
Jim, is that going from, you know, 80, mid-80s houses to 118, is that them, Allen had been just looking at the current lot sizing, realizing that they could stretch the amount of homes in that neighborhood?
No, the comments of 88 homes is not a document that the village is in receipt of. It's a planned, as I'm led to believe. I haven't seen the documents, but it's a developer's out of business, and was planned from the mid-'90s, so that none of those neighborhoods besides had been developed at that point.
One last question. I've heard the word, and I'm going to pronounce this incorrectly. Thank you very much, what he said, harmonious. Could you or Catherine address that? It's something that, quite candidly, I'm not familiar with, that It's something that, quite candidly, I'm not familiar with, that term.
I'll certainly turn it over to the attorney, but from staff's perspective, that it is very consistent with our residential units in that area of town, and thus would be in harmony. But if Catherine would like to further comment, or if you have a question on that, but in our review, it is harmonious to the area.
So we are looking at this special use at this moment in time, so the second standard, which you, we didn't quite get to, was the purpose, the proposed use will not affect adversely the health, safety of residents or workers in the area, and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties of the general neighborhood. So in terms of what we're talking about for the special use, that's our second standard. And I don't know if Kyle, is there somewhere else that harmonious is brought up in terms of a site plan, or? Not in terms of special land use. So if we can just focus on special land use right now, then the next thing we'll talk about the sketch plan. So the second standard is, would this proposed land use adversely affect health, safety of the residents or workers, and will not be detrimental to the use and development of adjacent properties of the general neighborhood? So I think you heard the comment that this is in compliance with the 2015 master plan. This area is proposed to be denser housing. It's part of the master plan is we wanted to allow smaller lots. You heard the discussion that they are not, they're complying with the R3 zoning district. And there was a question, somebody asked, why didn't they do a plat? I don't know why, you can ask the applicant when, if you want to, but generally, it takes more time. So when they wanted to go through the site condo, we've been advised that previously here in the village, you've always used the PRD process, the Planned Residential Development, to effectuate a site condominium approval. And obviously, if we do amend our zoning ordinance, we need to amend it to add specific standards for site condominium development. So somebody who is meeting all the standards of the zoning district that they're locating in, as is the case here, wouldn't need to go through the special land use. They would come in and do a site plan, they could do it through the condominium, they could do it through a subdivision plat, they would have either option. But in general, and you can ask the applicant to speak to this, it's a much faster process if they go through site condo. So I don't, in terms of special land use, I don't know where the term harmonious comes in. I think the two standards that are in your staff report from Kyle don't specifically mention harmonious, but they do implicate master plan. And your master plan does show this is appropriate for this property.
Jim, I had a question for you. Do you wonder if I heard this correctly, that this is a different developer than what originally planned this?
The developer in front of us with the application is who developed this. If people spoke 20, 25 years ago of what their vision was for that area as a developer, that's what it was. It wasn't any agreement that I'm aware of, that the village at all, that could have been someone, I don't know.
I have, this is Member Wortella, a couple of comments. I was at this location, this is, today was about the third time, I went over there, looked at it, drove around, walked around. And from what I see here, we talk about, number one, the general plan, adversely affecting the general plan. What I see here is different than what we have out there. It's a concept, it's my concept, it's different, I see that. And the other thing, health and safety, now, I respect Ms. Kaufman's and Mr. Mucha's work, and those are professionals. But I wonder about the safety. It says the side yard minimum could be reduced to five feet, 10 feet from one house to the other. What about a fire, and how quickly that could spread? I mean, I've seen houses 20 and 30 feet away from one that has burned.
This is the most comfortable question I've had. Those in the room that don't know, I've spent 34 years in the public safety business, or 25 years, and specifically in the police and fire, rise into the rank of chief, commanded many fires, probably in the hundreds, including residential fires. It is, it's a reality, we have buildings that their walls touch each other downtown, and there's tactics in firefighting to ensure that you, any type of exposure, dwellings on any side, would be immediately addressed. And I have confidence in Chief McMillan and his crew with the fire department, that if there was a fire in a residence, you'd not only have a team attacking that fire, but exposures on all sides, we'd get water blankets to protect them. It's not, that's not a concern that I have.
Well, I, if I may, Jim, you look at Boston, New York, Chicago, there's row house after row house after row house, and they have common walls, one house here, one house here. That was what was built, that was what was there, that was the common building method back in 20, and that was a common building method. And I think we don't, aren't exactly reproducing it here according to this sketch plan that I have, but to me, there's a health and safety concern, and I appreciate your expertise on the fire.
No, I respect your opinion. Like I said, having been in the business for 30 years now, it's not a concern of mine.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallory?
If there are no questions, we'd recommend, if the member or board sees fit, for a motion in support.
Motion to support?
Holmes, I second.
This is a motion to approve the special land use.
Okay.
You knew you brought me here for a reason, ninja. Okay, so if this is in fact what you want to do, it would be a motion to approve the special land use, you are the final decision-making body here. So if that's your will, then I would just rather have the motion say, motion to approve.
Representative Riashy, motion to approve.
Trustee Holmes, I second.
A motion in support?
Conversation amongst the board members, and if there is none, we'll do a roll call vote.
If I could, Jim, I think the key thing that I've heard tonight is this, and that is that this is a two-part discussion tonight, approval. The third part's going to come later, and that's where, you know, the proposal's going to be in front of the planning commission and the council. And from what I understand, what I know, and that is that, you know, we've, there's been deliberation within the village, there's been the review by our legal counsel, by the engineering company, to look at ordinances, to look at the laws, to look at what historically has, how this process unfolds in front of us, and that's what you're seeing, folks, is that up here, what we have to do is that we have to follow what is the process. And that's what you see unfolding in front of you tonight. So I just want to just share with you, it's not that we're not hearing what you're saying, it's not that we may agree or disagree with what you're saying, it's just simply that this is a process that we have to go through. And what we're hearing tonight is simply this, that the steps we're taking that were necessary in order to review the sketch design as well as the special land use, and then now we have to vote on that right now. Does not necessarily mean that this will be approved or not approved, it just means we're moving forward. Is that correct, Mr. Mallory?
Is the special land use, that's what the issue is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your points were well taken. So under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, it requires if a site plan meets the standards in the zoning ordinance, or can meet the standards with conditions imposed, it shall be approved. And the same thing for the special land use, under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. So that's why it was very important today for Kyle to present his professional staff report, where he concluded that either, and I think with the special land use is all we're talking about right now, that it had met the standards. Then you had discussion, and you had public comment, you had discussion. So if in fact you do move forward on this motion and it passes, the special land use will be approved. And remember, the special land use was just the planned residential development, which allows them to do a site condo, okay? Then the next step, as you said, would be the discussion on the sketch plan, and that would also be your final decision. And then if that's approved, they have a general layout, of which they have to then go back and put pen to paper, just as if they had a plat, they would go to step two of the plat, and they would formalize it, and get all the lot lines, all the easements, and they have a general layout right now, but they ultimately may lose a few lots here or there, or something may have to shift. So if you approve the special land use, as the motion's on the table right now, then it's allowed to, for them to continue on under the PRD to do a site condominium development. Okay?
A question, Member Wortella, so the motion in front of us now is to approve the special land use.
That is correct.
As a single motion. The site plan, we will have another motion and a second, and then the board can discuss that, so there will be a second vote on the site plan.
So for this vote, you can then have a planning commission deliberation on the sketch plan, you can ask questions of Kyle, you can ask questions of myself, you can ask questions of Mr. Mallory, any types of questions you want to ask direct to us, you can do it at that time, okay? So this is just, as we said, we're separating the motions, this is just the special land use.
So we have a motion on the table? You got support? Let's do a roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Mr. Wortella.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt.
Yes.
Mr. Riashy.
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
We did the special land use approval, are we going back to the preliminary sketch plan?
And again, to emphasize that this is the preliminary sketch plan approval, which, if passed, would lead to a more detailed site plan. This has met all the requirements, has received support and recommendations to approve from our engineering firm, our zoning and planning, as well as our legal staff, and therefore I present to the planning commission, our recommendation is for a motion support and approval of the sketch plan as presented. Yeah. Yeah. The recommendations have to do with lots 10, 13, and 14. Those are the three lots that were currently under the front yard. Size, I think it was 50 feet below it, but those three, we do have on a meeting of December 6th, in agreement with the developer, that the site plan, those three lots, will meet the minimum frontage of 50 foot, and that the stormwater basin calculations would not be included in open space, and that they would maximize the open space for the majority to use. Correct, as presented, and that's the three I mentioned, lots 10, 13, 14, common space accessible to the maximum number of units, stormwater basins are removed from the open space calculations, additional comments provided by other reviewing agencies such as engineers are addressed, and the engineers were satisfied at the sketch plan, knowing those details will come in the conversation before the site plan.
There are questions in regards to the sketch plan?
This is Member Wortella, I do have some questions. The homes that are being proposed, they're, the owner will have the ability to, is it single-story or two-story?
They're units, they have 10 to 12 different designs, and they range currently from 1,250 square feet to 2,100 square feet.
Single floor?
Single family, they could, there's multiple of those options that have one or two stories.
Okay. And this site plan that I have here, it shows a lot size of 7,923 feet, but that's going to be amended, and they'll be building 7,200?
No, there could be some that are larger, but we were talking about the minimum size.
We don't know how many minimum sizes.
We will at the final site plan, but they will all meet the minimum.
And the, again, part of the documents we have here, side yards, the minimum side yard requirement may be reduced to five feet. So from that house, five feet, to five feet to another wall, another residence, another family. And I guess I do wonder about the backyards also, we're keeping, is it going to be 30 feet, or some of them may have 25 feet, but we're keeping 30?
The specifics on all the lots will come at the site plan review, but it will meet our three district minimum requirements.
Well, that wall to this wall is about 60 feet, so my neighbor, if I lived there, is going to be right there at that wall, Jim.
I don't know if this room's 60 feet, but again, it's not, it's not a concern of staff.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Mallory, or council, or Mr. Mucha?
Thank you.
Go ahead and ask for a motion for the sketch plan approval?
Motion to approve the preliminary sketch plan as proposed?
Motion on the table, support?
Support from Plankenhorn.
Got support?
Mr. Chair, can we just clarify that that would include the four conditions that were recommended by staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
So it would be the preliminary sketch plan with the four additions approved by staff?
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Plankenhorn.
Support.
Mr. Bishop.
Support.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt. Mr. Riashy.
Support.
Mr. Wortella.
No.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Move on to action item 8B. Give coffee, consider the request for site plan approval for the address of 215 East Prairie Street regarding the development of retail coffee shop. Mr. Mallory?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Again, this is a site plan review, I will call up Kyle to say a few words, and Catherine, but overall, again, it's for us. And Catherine, but overall, again, it's for us, and this has been months in the conversation, on taking in feedback and the final site plan review. I think you'll know from previous conversations with the Planning Commission, is addressed concerns, referenced traffic, aesthetics and that. And I would just point out that the entry exit point has been moved to the furthest point to the north. Handy, or the parking requirements have been met with the handicap, the layout of the building. You'll see on the site plan, the pedestrian walkways within the parking lot that lead up to the walk-up windows, which will provide people to purchase product at this location. Also, the addition on the southeast corner of the lot, or conversely, the northwest corner of the Prairie-Richardson intersection, will be place making seating that will match the decorum of our downtown place making, thus expanding that walkability, which ends with the place making furniture at Kalamazoo Avenue. Would now will put some furniture all the way down at the Richardson Street intersection. So I will have Kyle and Catherine available for questions. But through engineering, zoning, planning, and legal, it is our, after review, our recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the site plan as presented. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, remind me, I know we've had previous discussions about this, but regarding the entrance into the property, that's on, as the diagram shows, it's on Richardson. Now, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it, that the only entrance into the property is off of Richardson?
Entry and exit point, yes.
Okay. Wasn't there some dialogue that we had with them regarding that? Where there was a question at the initial part of this, and then the developer came back and...
The initial conversations, as the current configuration of the lot is, there's two entry-exit points. And through conversations we had with the developer and worked with their architects and staff, as well as Pry Newhoff, to eliminate the one that's closest to the Prairie-Richardson Street intersection. And as you see here tonight, has a one, only one entry-exit point. And I think Mr. Wirtella had brought that up before, but it's to the furthest north. Also, the layout of the building is been moved from the initial summary presentation, I think at the last meeting, which allows for the most amount of cars to be in. I think they call it the queue, or the line waiting. So we're very pleased, and the developer's been exceptional to work with and is local from the Three Rivers area, I believe. And really excited to become a part of the Vicksburg community and very, received all of our suggestions very well and incorporated, so.
This is Member Wirtella. We have, this, I think, is a workable project here. That driveway was one of my concerns. We do have one driveway. It's been moved apparently as far north as possible. And the shop itself, that's going to be a one-way street that's going to go around that coffee shop there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, as we talked about, with this being one of the, within the village core, the walkable core of the Village of Vicksburg, I think the property owner, the developer, is going to be in good shape with that. They do have four or five chairs, four...
Those are tables surrounded by about four chairs, kind of similar to what's out on the bump outs on Prairie and Main Street.
And crosswalks to get from that area and off the sidewalk on Prairie to get to that area. So I think part of the pedestrian congestion, I think that's going to be mitigated. I know there's traffic there, but we have traffic at Main Street and Prairie. We have a signal there, but we have traffic in Vicksburg. And I think that's why the developer is looking here. There is traffic at this location, and that's, I guess, both foot traffic and vehicle traffic.
The other note is, because I think, it might have been you, Mr. Wirtella, or another board member at the previous meeting had asked about school buses. At the start of this year, the pickup at the middle school goes from behind the VAB through that parking lot. So the buses aren't coming off Prairie Street.
Jim, this is Member Ryashi. Any more talks about the car yard next to that location, about redeveloping that at all?
That's probably another conversation in another day, in front of the, is this specific lot?
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Any other questions, anybody? So we are looking for a motion to consider the request for site approval for the address of 2015 East Prairie regarding the development of a retail coffee shop.
This is Member Wirtella. I propose that the site plan for the Big B Coffee at 215 East Prairie Street be approved as presented.
Motion on the table, do we have support?
Motion to support.
I do apologize, Planning Commission. There is, within our staff report, four conditions that we would like to just draw your attention to. So in your motion, if you so choose, staff is recommending the following conditions be imposed on this. Number one, details pertaining to exterior lighting are submitted for review to ensure compliance with village regulations. That can be administratively reviewed. Two, screened fence along the west and north property boundaries be increased from six feet, as proposed on the plans, to eight feet. That is a requirement under Section 475-120-A. Or alternatively, a berm, hedge, or other dense evergreen plantings are installed in accordance with Section 475-120-A. Three, a narrative regarding the loading/unloading area of the site is provided for administrative review. And then four, any and all comments are provided by the village engineer and other reviewing agencies are addressed. So I did want to draw the Planning Commission's attention to those four staff conclusions and conditions.
Thanks, Kyle. I mentioned I was going to bring Kyle up and...
Going to leave us in the dark, Jim.
Someone asked me for a picture.
All right, let's amend that and say I need a motion for the consideration of the site plan approval for 2015 East Prairie regarding the development of the retail coffee shop, including the four proposed conditions from McKenna Group.
Member Wirtella, I'll amend my motion to include the four items that were discussed.
Motion, do we have support?
Motion to support.
Motion passes.
Take a roll call vote.
It's been a while, sorry. Roll call vote, sir.
Roll call vote. Member Holmes.
Yes.
Member Bishop.
Yes.
Member DeBalt.
Yes.
Member Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Member Wirtella.
Yes.
Member Ryashi.
Yes.
Member Bailey.
Yes.
Okay, on to modify the schedule of regulation pertaining to the industrial zoning district text amendments. Mr. Mallory, do you have anything to...
We're going to ask Kyle to come up and present. It will be staff's recommendation. One thing to note, this will be a request, this will be a request to, for your support to go to the council to approve. Ultimately, this will go to the village council. So just to clarify that. But with that, Kyle, if you want to go into more detail, but as we explained at the last meeting, we wanted to place Vicksburg in a more competitive spot with our zoning as it relates to industrial zoning. So we did, asked McKenna to do an analysis of southwest Michigan, other municipalities, and put us in a position that we can be competitive to recruit industrial development in town. So with that, Kyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. If I could request, Mr. Mallory, to put up our report, that might be beneficial as well. On the projector, just so Planning Commission can follow along. As Mr. Mallory has indicated, the village zoning ordinance under our industrial text amendments permits development under our schedule of regulations as well. We have three districts, the I-1, I-2, and I-3. There are minimum lot areas for each district's minimum lot widths, maximum height, maximum lot coverage, and minimum setbacks for each of those districts itself. It has been, under our analysis, that the districts themselves are, in essence, undersized and not allowing the full potential that these districts can have. In our staff report, we also list out the permitted uses. I won't go into those unless Planning Commission has questions on those. But then through this as well, we do have some areas within the village, primarily three off of, I'm going to approach their name, Leja? Leja, thank you. Leja Business Park. There's second area is east of Spruce Street and south of EV Avenue. And then number three is east of Park Avenue and west of South Richardson Street. On page three of our report, there is those marked out as well. So within that, we also conducted a community analysis within Kalamazoo County to talk about what the other municipalities are permitting for their industrial districts. We looked at the city of Portage, the city of Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo Township, Comstock Township, Ostromo Township, and Texas Township. And then through in there, on page four of your report, we did list out minimum lot sizes, maximum height, maximum lot coverage, and then the setbacks for each of those districts as well, to give you a comparison of what the communities are offering and providing. So within that, we are proposing some modifications to the Village of Vicksburg's ordinance as well. And in there, we're requesting that we reduce the minimum lot area for the industrial districts, reduce the minimum lot width, increase the maximum building height, increase the maximum lot coverage, and then reduce the minimum front, side, and rear yard setback requirements. And in this background, too, the Planning Commission, you are recommending body. This would ultimately go to village council for approval, so therefore, as well. So in this, we're requesting, suggesting, anyway, to Planning Commission to reduce the minimum lot size in the I-1 from 200,000 to 100,000 square feet, the I-2 from 50,000 to 25,000, the I-3 from 60 to 43,560. That's an acre, just for reference. That's where we got the 43,560, it's one acre. Lot width for the I-1 reduced from 300 to 200 feet. I-2, 150 to 100 feet. The I-3 from 150 to 100. Maximum building height to increase from 35 to 40 feet in the I-1. The I-2 district will go from 35 to 45, the I-3 from 35 to 45 as well. Maximum lot coverage, currently the I-1 permits 20 percent, we're suggesting 40 percent. The I-2 at 30, proposing 50. And the I-3 from 50, or 30 going to 60. Front yard setbacks, reduction from 100 feet in the I-1 to 75. The I-2, keep it consistent at 50, and the I-3 at 50. Minimum side yard setbacks for the I-1 reduced from 50 feet to 40. I-2, 50 feet to 25, and the I-3, 50 to 25. And then the I-1 district requesting 50 feet to 40 feet for the rear yard setbacks and keep the I-2 and I-3 at 25. Pause there for any questions from Planning Commission.
Hey, Kyle, the recommendations that you're giving, I'm just curious what they're, obviously McKenna's recommendations, but what are they based on? Are they industry standards? Are they similar communities or size? I'm just curious where these are coming from.
There is no industry standard. Every community is different. As shown even on page four, Mr. Holmes' report from the other communities, we wanted to just offer suggested items as well through our analysis of Portage, Kalamazoo, the townships as well. So as a municipality, you set your own regulations from that, from the schedule of regulations as well. However, that's why the analysis in here provided to you from just sample communities as well. Obviously, some of these communities have larger land masses, so they can offer larger lots to develop. Vicksburg, we are very limited in that. So we felt that a reduction, as we are proposing, would permit further investment as well into the community and then also offer up still protection to the adjacent neighborhoods and others as well. So just because these would be amended and reduced, if it gets to that point with council, there are still site plan requirements and other options for property owners and business owners to go through. So this would just be to reduce the existing regulations to allow greater flexibility on industrial lots.
So is it fair to say then that we're just making the best use of the limited land that we have available?
Could be that, but again, it really boils down to being competitive. When we're looking at a manufacturing facility of 75,000 square feet and the village just invested in purchasing 10 acres of additional, that's property within the village, zoned industrial, connected to 117 acres of developed property in the village, all already zoned industrial. We're out there looking, the three to 10-year mark, once a manufacturing facility is going to look and they, maybe if it's as wide as southwest Michigan, but specific to Kalamazoo County due to maybe a supply chain, that we... So when you say there's not an industry standards, but there are standards that these other municipalities have currently, and our state's back to the early 70s, where they've updated it to meet the needs in today's world. And we're saying, we're meeting the competitive standards that have been set by other municipalities that could potentially attract some of this manufacturing that we feel we have an excellent opportunity to put here in Vicksburg.
And additionally, Mr. Holmes, to your point as well, we did provide an analysis in your packet of what our understanding is of the existing industrial district properties. Those numbers on that map are in acres, so you can see a lot of ours are smaller sized acres. Therefore, limiting with the current standards of what can go there. So with these proposed...
I need to correct or add to. There's what Kyle just said, but again, there is an undeveloped 127 acres of property in the municipality of Vicksburg, zoned industrial, that is undeveloped, that will be developed. So you have 127 acres that could be developed into X number of lots, from one facility of 127 acres to lower than that. So this wasn't motivated due to only what currently is developable. Developable, or hooked up to the utilities of this town. It's out there no different than when we looked at purchasing this property, and we also invested in the infrastructure in that town. We're projecting out up to 70 years what's needed.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory.
All right, we've heard Mr. Mushka, we've talked with Jim. Does anybody have any questions before we move forward? Jim, are we going to open the public hearing prior to...
There's no public hearing for this. This is a motion to... And is there? Yes. Okay, yes, there is. There we go. We better do that with a roll call vote.
I will go ahead and open up motion for public hearing.
Mr. DeBalt, I'd like to open up a public hearing for the industrial zoning districts.
This is Member Bishop. I support.
Motion and support.
In a roll call vote, Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Mr. Ryashi.
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. DeBalt.
Yes.
Mr. Wirtella.
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
If there's anyone wishing, desiring to have citizen comments, again, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Rebecca Walters, 420 South Kalamazoo. I'm hoping this doesn't fall on deaf ears like the rest of the issues have. But my concern with shrinking the lot sizes, as I do know that on the... But my concern with shrinking the lot sizes, as I do know that on the master plan that we are currently working on. That there is going to be some discussion on how to beautify the, or the industrial area. And make sure that it is not messing with the neighborhoods and stuff like that. With lowering and making these lot sizes smaller. Are the businesses that are able to come in, the factories in that area, going to be reduced on what they're able to do? To make sure that it still looks pretty and is not hindering the locals in that area. Thank you.
Chris Newman, 1149 Meadows Suite Lane. I, for one, am glad to see this particular aspect. As a previous member of this commission for 15 years, I know that we had overseen developments in the Leja Industrial Park. The most recent one being the pulver dryer building, the big monstrosity that stands there that's 50 feet tall. At the time, our zoning regulations required, they needed that height for the machine that they were putting in there. And the only way that we could give them that was to reduce, or to increase their sides, their lots setback. One foot in for every foot that they went up. So instead of being 25 feet or 30 feet from the sideline, they had to be an additional 15 feet away. With the increase in height allowed or requested under these, we would not have had to do that and they would have been able to develop that lot. In a more cohesive and comprehensive manner. So I'm very excited about this. And just real quick, speaking to the, the screening and the beautification, that's a separate part. That goes with site plan review and they still have to meet the requirements for screening. I, I do like the fact that we're becoming competitive and trying to streamline, you know, attract more types of manufacturing, you know. And a smaller scale to where we don't have to, you know, somebody doesn't have to buy, you know, 10 acres of, of property to be able to put on, on something. To where in another municipality, they could get away with, on something with five acres or even three. So kudos to the village for moving forward with this and thanks to you guys for entertaining this. And thank you to Kyle for reading off all those numbers, although I did miss the, the height changes.
We did not receive any communication in the office on this topic. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we recommend a motion and support to end the public hearing.
Member Ryashi, motion to support.
Holmes, I second.
Motion and support. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Roll call vote. Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. DeBolt.
Yes.
Mr. Wirtella.
Yes.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Ryashi.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
It is, you heard Kyle, you've heard comments from citizens. It is staff's request. To modify the schedule of regulations pertaining to the industrial zoning district and that this action. Will be a recommendation to the village council for final approval. We would recommend a motion, support, and a roll call vote to recommend village council approval of the staff request.
This is member Bishop. I support the recommendation going to staff. To request the modification of the schedule of regulations pertaining to the industrial zoning districts.
Mr. Bishop makes the motion.
Member Plankenhorn, I support.
There's no discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Roll call. Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wirtella.
Yes.
Mr. Ryashi.
Yes.
Mr. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Plankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes or Mr. DeBolt? I don't know. I missed one of you. Thank you very much. Pretty quick downtown development. We have moved the grant recommendations, given potentially one other submission of a grant. And we'll be making presentations to the Downtown Development Authority. We have listed January 8th, however. We, we're going to see if this building's available. The new municipal building will not be available for public meeting until January 29th. So we'll report back on that, but wanted you to be aware as well. On the DDA, hopefully everyone had an opportunity to experience Christmas in the Berg on Saturday. Right now, we're estimating about. 11,000 people were in town for the event. Heard from numerous entities, businesses, farmer's market that was involved. That it was record days all around on economic data points, people. And just was, was a fantastic time. I give a recognition to Chief Sanderson and his crew at the police department. As well as Jimmy Myers leading the Department of Public Works for all the effort that they put in to get the town ready and looking the way it did. And then their performance on Saturday was second to none. It was just pretty proud to, to watch them perform, so thank you. The only other report I have is the municipal building update. We do have temporary occupancy. The police department will start moving in on the 13th. Staff will follow a week later and it, we're, the delay in being able to have a public meeting is due to, we are demoing the existing. Village Hall and, and then a temporary parking lot will be put in place. Final parking lot landscaping will be completed before May 17th with a. Open house event scheduled for May 18th, which surrounds the largest municipal half birthday celebration in the history of America. 151 and a half year celebration of the Berg, so you're all invited May 18th. It's a Saturday all day.
That wraps up your report, Jim.
It does. So citizen comments for non-agenda items.
Move on to citizens' comments for non-agenda items. Anybody want to get up and speak?
Guys, Rebecca Walters, 420 South Kalamazoo Ave. There was two things that I wanted to discuss that are not on the agenda, and that's in regards to the master plan that we're doing this year, not 2015. And that's, in one of them, in goal four, you specifically have a bullet point that says, update the village zoning ordinance to allow an increase in housing density, density. Within the residence districts. That is exactly what everyone said they did not want to do. They do not want to increase the density. While we have some people that say five feet in between is enough for a fire, is safe for a fire, all of your residents do not like that, that response. They do not agree that, oh, 15 minutes out of town, seven minutes out of town, we can live five feet apart and expect our fire department to get there in time to prevent a garage fire. In fact, 420 South Kalamazoo's garage, or the one right next door to me, caught on fire and caught each other on fire. And we're five feet apart. The fire department wasn't there in time, but the insurance is paid for both of them. So while you guys are going forward with the, the master plans and trying to get with this residential density upped. Let's focus on what your residents are saying and let's actually hear them and they do not want the density to increase. It is, it is catastrophic every time. Every time there's an incident, it is catastrophic and it's not okay. And you guys just keep ignoring that. The other issue is you guys are working on downtown and making sure the, the walking lanes and everybody's able to get to there. But also on your master plan for upcoming is bike lanes. How's that going to work with Big B right there? How's that going to work all throughout the downtown when you guys just shrunk our main driveways throughout the town? Where are these bike lanes going to go? Are you guys going to tear up sidewalks to put these in? Are you guys going to make the, the traffic lights downtown? Have a second, a fourth light for the bikes? How is this going to work? That's what I have.
Any other citizens with comments?
Joe Ramsdale, 1126 Meadows Suite Lane. Just a, just a thought. If they were using the same regulations on the first issues in Centennial. And those same issues are going to show up again, maybe it's not so much the fact that maybe just tweak your regulations. And make it fit to make sense for the community and not for people trying to squeeze us in. If it's broken, fix it. If it's not, okay.
Any other citizens with comments? If not, we'll move on. Mr. Mallory, you have a building update, municipal building update, or you already did that? I guess we're going to come to a close then. Members' comments? We'll start down there. Mr. Wirtella. Mr. DeBolt.
Just want to say it was a wonderful weekend. It was a great time to be downtown Vicksburg. It's quite, quite a nice atmosphere all around town. So just wanted to tell everybody thank you for all, everything, man, so.
Mr. Holmes.
Would just like to say I appreciate all of you being here tonight. Your comments were taken, noted. And it's always good to see citizens engaged. Thank you. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Yep, I will second that. It's good to see the amount of people that care to be here, so.
Mr. Bishop. Ms. Plankenhorn.
I will echo Mr. DeBolt. Thank you to the village staff. This weekend was really, really incredible.
Echoing again, I mean, there were people from all over the region that came to experience what Vicksburg has become. You know, seeing people across all ages be able to enjoy our downtown, I thought it was a really, really special day, so.
Thank you, members. Thank everybody for their patience with me behind the gavel tonight. It's been a little while. With that being said, we'll go ahead and adjourn. 8:32.